This is about as far away as you can get with Craybilly. Preserve Craybilly. And I want to preserve Craybilly. And it's not going to be hard for me to use Craybilly. I'm just going to get in my car and get down there. I would ride on a bike. I would take a trail if they were available, but it's not. So I'm going to use my car and I'm going to get down there. But it's not going to be hard. Not going to be hard. Okay? Now, I'm also commenting on behalf of Vote Yes to Save Craybilly Group. This group felt that a comment tonight was not needed. Most people know what the position of Vote Yes on Craybilly is. And it's easy to find the facts that they rely on. You just go to their website, votyescraybilly.com. The case for preservation is made there and it's made on the Natural Lands website. The Vote Yes for Craybilly Group felt that a comment was not needed tonight because, you know what the position is. And we urge the township to devote as much time to answering your questions. We have the experts here. Natural Lands Trust, Natural Lands, Hardening. Natural Lands is the expert on land conservation. There's no dispute about this. But the township firmly urged us to make a comment, so here are my comments. I've been an environmental lawyer for over 50 years. So I can tell you that the opportunity to preserve Craybilly is a rare one. Many townships don't get this opportunity. This opportunity is also unique, okay? It's one of a kind because it relates to the Craybilly property and not some other parcel in West Town Township. And the opportunity, if it's not seized, likely won't come again for the preservation of Craybilly. So the opportunity should be evaluated carefully by the residents because we have to pay part of the costs of preservation. Now, it's my opinion that this opportunity can only be evaluated in context. And here's the context. In my opinion, there are only two choices to be made about Craybilly. Craybilly will either be developed for residential homes or it will be preserved. If you fail to pass the referendum, you will have made a choice. Craybilly will be developed and you only have to look at the feckless and uninspired development plan presented by the last developer to see what will happen to Craybilly. So the choice presented by the open space referendum really boils down to this. Do you want Craybilly to be developed or do you want to preserve Craybilly? Accordingly, it's logical to compare the consequences of development with the consequences of preservation. And it turns out that on every basis of comparison, it's better to preserve Craybilly. So let's take the time to ask the experts their questions. Is this better for our pocketbooks? Can West Town Township afford this? Is it better on maintenance and infrastructure costs? Is it better for historical preservation? Is it better on traffic? Is it better on adjacent property values? Is it better on crime? Is it better for water quality? Is it better for drinking water? Is it better for wetlands preservation? Is it better on earth movement? Is it better for air quality, do you think? How about stormwater control? Is it better for flood control? Is it better for impervious surface coverage? Is it better for hiking and trails? Is it better for health and welfare? Is it better for habitat preservation? Is it better on dark skies? Is it better for diversity protection and wildlife conservation? Is it better for energy conservation? Is it better for pollution prevention? Is it better for trash reduction? Is it better for climate change? Is it better on seed preservation? Is it better on estate? Is it better for the preservation of the natural values of the environment? Does it not comport better with our obligations under Pennsylvania's Environmental Rights Constitutional Amendment? You knew I skipped that, didn't you? Doesn't the preservation of Craybilly better reflect our values as a community and our stated commitment to the preservation of open space, rural values, and environmental protection? Isn't the preservation of Craybilly best for our kids and for future generations to come? Isn't this what our Parks and Recreation Plan recommends? Isn't this what our Parks and Recreation Plan recommends? So why wouldn't we vote yes for the preservation of Craybilly? Why wouldn't we vote yes on the open space tax referendum? You answer that question and we'll see what you do in November.
Good evening. My name is Brian Walsh. I'm a resident of West Town. Really not far from Jack, but I do have a totally different opinion on this. So give me a moment. Heat glasses, my mind is younger than I used to be. Thank you to the supervisors for having this meeting. I appreciate the time. I believe the Crayberry acquisition is wrong. It's not affordable. The analysis using the township's own numbers, not anything that was made up, but the numbers on their website actually based on some of the slides from Natural Lands Tonight, some of these numbers actually are low. So the share of the easement I have at 2.184 million. The cost for the purchase at 5.2, for total cost at 7.35, which is really closer to 7.5 based on that. Now, if the Natural Lands is saying now it's 25 to 30, so that was based on a 25. So if it's 30%, we have to put up, that's even more. A 30-year bond, the interest on that bond for 30 years is going to be over $12 million. The payment of a bond principal at the end is the original 7.5 million, which puts us up to almost $20 million that we're actually paying for our portion of Craybilly. The sinking fund contribution to retire the acquisition is going to be $246,000, $248,000 now. And the annual interest cost is going to be about $410,000. So it's going to cost us about $655,000 for Craybilly. The anticipated revenue increase for taxes was $681,000. They said that would give us 25%. That really only gives us 4%, or about $28,000 for surplus. You're not going to maintain Craybilly for $28,000 a year. You can't even come close to it. The operating conditions to try to keep that moat cleared, felled trees and so on, are going to be somewhere around $140,000 a year. That's assuming that you don't add to anything there. You're not putting in parking lots, you're not putting in trails. That's just to maintain what's there. The Robinsons are spending a ton of money each year to maintain this property. So again, the estimated maintenance cost at present conditions, without any changes, is going to be almost $7 million over this 30-year bond. We're saddling ourselves, our children, and in some case, our grandchildren with a ridiculous amount of money. Would it be nice to preserve Craybilly? Absolutely. Would I like to buy a new car every month? Maybe, but I can't afford it. So you make decisions based upon what you can afford. This is not affordable. You were told that there was a study that shows that you're going to pay an additional dollar for every dollar spent to build stuff. That's one study. There's other studies that show that you're actually going to come out on the positive side. Studies that were done by YES shows that the school district would actually have $1,100 ahead per student. The study by Babbitt, it's your study, not mine. You can laugh all you want, but it's the one you guys put out. The one by Babbitt shows closer to $8,000 a year. Numbers can be pushed all over the place depending upon who has a point of view they're trying to push. There's an old adage that says, "Figures don't lie when the liar's big." I don't think anybody's a liar, but I think people use figures to support themselves. The numbers that I'm telling you are the numbers coming from West Town Township. Not numbers that I made up, not conjecture, not somebody's study, put this stuff off their website. West Town already has $13 million approximately in bond debt. $13 million. And we want to add another, almost $8 million to that. What do we do when we have problems? We refinanced bonds last year to save interest, which was a great idea. It appears we didn't pay any of the principal, even though we should have had money approved for that by that time. So I don't know if I really want to go into this saying, "We should have this money, we should have that." The money's not going to be there. They also put together a budget, which I was told was part of Natural Lands, for some of the improvements, that parking lot and taking down some houses and things that they say have to be done. And the costs there on that sheet are ridiculously low. I think all we have to do is look at Oakbourne. We've had that property for almost 50 years. Not just these supervisors, but all supervisors up to this point have let that property go to pre-portal disrepair. And now we're looking at spending money on it, millions. We had $6 million in surplus, we may be using that. When they were pushing this form, we were told that we were going to get roughly $5 million in grants. So far, we've achieved $1.5 million. They borrowed $3.5 million on this most recent bond to start funding that project. One of the things going in there are pickleball courts. I don't know how many people here play pickleball, but if you want to play, get a membership to ACAC or the WINE. The rest of this shouldn't be paying for everybody else, for a few people. There's maybe 1% or 2% nationwide to play pickleball. But all of a sudden, we've got to support that. Now, we're going to be spending $6 to $12 million possibly on Oakbourne to try to bring it up. Oakbourne is a gem. The Mansion House on Oakbourne is one of the finest houses in all of Chester County. And unfortunately, it's not being used the way it should. It's not being maintained. The property's not maintained. The site is about 140 acres, almost, 137 acres. And the mansion house and surrounding grounds and the ball fields and the grounds attached to that are about 70 acres. And they've just been let go. So if they've let that go, they have no money to do that. How are we going to have the money to do Craybilly? There's no way we can come up with the kind of money that the Robinsons have been spending on this property. You're also being told that these tax increases, your earned income tax is going to go up as they keep saying, 0.8%. That sounds like a nice low number. Unfortunately, your income tax rate right now is 1%. If you raise it 0.8, you've actually had an 8% increase in that tax. The .42 mils on the property tax and West Town property tax is, if not the highest in Chester County, one of the highest. But that property tax is going to go up 12%. The Westchester School Board is already talking about a 6.7% increase in the school tax next year. We're in the middle of a high inflation period, the highest we've had in 40 years. And our solution is, let's go borrow more money. This is absurd. Would it be nice to preserve Craybilly? Yes. If we had donors, if we had money, if the Robinson family wanted to say, "Hey, we'll take a tax break and we'll donate that $7 million to you and get grants for the rest," that would be wonderful. That's not happening. We can't afford it. And you really need to think carefully about this before you vote in November for something that you're going to be paying for forever. And we have no way to pay for maintenance because by the township's own numbers, there's not enough money coming in. I don't know what their bond revenue was based on, but it certainly isn't going to be at 3% or 4% anymore. The Fed is going to raise the interest rate three quarters of a point, it appears to be, next week. That's going to have another impact on these rates. This is just something that we can't afford. I have plenty of stuff to back this up. I know we're trying to keep this short, so I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody asks. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, everyone. While John is getting us set up for the public comment or question period, just a couple of rules of the road. First off, we're going to take questions from residents of the township. You don't have to give your address, but please identify yourself, name, and if you are a potential resident, and then ask your question. And then I'm going to reinforce or reemphasize what I said at the outset. We are going to stay civil this evening. Snickers, gaffes have no place in this discussion for the balance of the evening. So again, I'm going to ask that you all, while you may disagree with a comment or a question or an answer, refrain from any outbursts. Let's keep this civil. Remember, at the end of the day, we're all township residents. We all want what's best for the community. We certainly don't need any snickering out in the audience.
All right. So why don't folks make lines? Do you want to quietly have a question for any of the panels? I would invite Todd and maybe Brian and Jack to come up to the podium in case there are questions that should be answered by them. So make a line behind Carol on this side and behind Christina. Please, Christina, on that side. We'll just sort of go one by one. Phil, if you want to say?
Is it best to keep this in here? Can you speak?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? So this morning, we had some interesting communications from the Chester County Republican Committee, which was then corrected to be the West Town Corvair in Birmingham Committee. And to clarify, I have some questions. They referred to my name, but they also referred to the board, Scott, myself, and Dick, and a decision that we made last year. So I have a question. And this is regarding the Pennsylvania Charter Leadership School's desire to develop Craybilly land, mentioning the township turned away the project of 100 acres, and mentions also some details about the township paying the township in lieu of the taxes because it's a school that they would not be providing. And kind of a quick quote. So I want to clarify that for the board and for myself and for the correct data. So I have a question for John. I want to know if a plan was submitted to the township for the township decision in 2021.
So Carol's asking whether there was a plan to develop for, I guess, a sketch plan from a potential party that was interested in purchasing the land. Yes, at the staff level, there was at least one sketch plan that was reviewed for what we call area bulk requirements, basically making sure that a plan that had sufficient, didn't have too much impervious coverage, the setbacks were complying with our zoning ordinance. I can confirm that our zoning officer, Megan Dobson, reviewed one such sketch plan, but it was very preliminary that just a staff level.
And did it comply with our ordinance?
Well, I think it's very safe, first of all, that very rarely does a preliminary sketch plan comply with the zoning ordinance. It takes usually several iterations before it comes into compliance.
And was a sizable portion of the property to be built on by them?
Yeah.
Their desire for the college to also build and the Westchester High School?
Let me back up. So whenever you have property, and Todd alluded to this too, whenever you have a parcel like this, it's attractive to developers, whether it's going to be any development. So you're going to have inquiries from all levels. As I said, the proposal that I remember our zoning officer hearing needed a lot of work before we meet the zoning ordinance. But I think the larger question is, that proposal would not have preserved Craybilly as open space in any sort of meaningful way. And beyond that, I don't know that it's broken for me as staff to comment on it. But what is being proposed here with the assistance of Natural Lands is truly preservation of open space and not some, you know...
Did the board turn that plan away in any way, as mentioned?
No, as I said, it was, whenever we get inquiries from developers, the first step is for our zoning officers to review it. This never made it to the staff, to the board level because it was, there was just much more work than we did. Beyond that, I don't feel comfortable really commenting too much because the applicant didn't get to that.
There was an executive session, which only the board was aware of and/or the applicant who's on the Chester County Republican Committee, West Town Committee. So there were very few people that knew about this development. It was huge. 75% of the land with building coverage. My second question is to Todd, following up with the same topic. Are you familiar with this plan?
I am not familiar with the specifics of it. When we were first approached by the landowner, he made us aware that there was interest from a potential school for a portion of the property. We actually tried to reach out to them to see if there was a potential to partner. Jack may actually remember the conversations, but I don't think we ever really heard back about the interest. So it didn't go further from our perspective.
Thank you. I think that having important data, correct data, especially by communications now in this particular thing, is really important. Do you know how much capital reserve the township has? No, I'm asking you.
Yeah, well, I need, like, so somebody can hear me. I was told that it would used to be about $6 million. And I understand some of that has been earmarked. Again, not being a supervisor, not being wrong, it's tough to drill down and find stuff on the website.
Yeah. I think it's $10 million now and our sewer debt is mixed up in our actual other debt.
But did you say capital reserve or debt?
Our capital reserve.
Okay. But yeah, when they just refinanced the bond, it's my understanding that they combined the sewer bond and general obligation bonds, which, while perfectly legal, it's rather egregious just because the sewer bond was originally, the revenues of the sewer system were responsible for guaranteeing that bond. Now, every resident, whether they have the sewer or not, is responsible for that bond. So I don't think that was a good move. My other question, you were on, I don't know if you were on the board still then, did any of the original principal from those bonds that got refinanced, any of that get paid off or did we just simply refinance the bonds in total?
That's a messy picture. What's our financial status right now? What's our bond rating?
We're a double A from Moody's, which is about as strong a bond rating as we could have, I would take. With some exception with what Mr. Walsh said, we don't co-mingle sewer debt and general obligation debt, meaning that if you are on the last set, if you are not paying for, your tax dollars are not paying for any sewer debt we have. That's full stop. So you know, as far as our reserves, that would be, off the top of my head, the actual number of, amount of reserves that could be used for, to defray the costs, would be substantial. I'm reluctant to give you the number right now. My finance director probably killed me, but it's substantial.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say this. Carol Wilf and I are speaking on behalf of Dean, a resident at 1033 South Lees Street. Thank you all for this.
Can I make a suggestion? My suggestion would be is that you guys better question whether, as you're speaking, can they hear you in the back? It's a little difficult hearing this here.
Can you hear us when we speak? Okay.
Sorry, I have to adjust when I'm too short. I have a question, I have a couple of questions. One, I know how much acreage goes for in West Chester County. It runs about $35,000 to $50,000. So how did $100,000 an acre come to bid?
The property was appraised by a state certified appraiser and appraised to federal yellow book standards, which is required if you're going to go after federal grant money. So we had an appraisal done.
Okay, good. That's one thing I wanted to know. And how much time do you have to fundraise for all of this?
So the sales agreement has some milestones built into it. I think we have 18 months from the time it was signed, with the possibility of going back to the landowner if we've made significant strides at that point in raising the funding and asking for an extension. But initially, it was 18 months.
Does Natural Lands have a dedicated donation made for this project?
We don't yet because we wanted to focus on the big chunks coming through the grant funds first and show that we have significant progress made towards funding the project. And then we would essentially start the private fundraising at some point when we know kind of have a better idea what the gap is and what we need to raise.
I saw that you had the Marshall Reynolds Foundation listed, and I'm just wondering if the Chester County Community Foundation is getting involved with helping to find different funding banks?
Yeah, I mean, we have ongoing relationships with various foundations around the area, some of which have indicated a positive interest in supporting this project. We just haven't really focused on the private fundraising side of it yet until we have a better idea on the grant funding.
Okay. And can the bond be paid early? Because I know we were talking about 30-year bond and how long that's going to take, but can't be bonds be paid early?
To defees a bond, maybe not. You can always refinance it after. It's usually a five-year call period. Now on its new bonds, there's a change with the tax law change a couple of years ago. It's typically a five-year call period.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know. And then the other thing that wasn't mentioned in the Natural Lands presentation was the fact that we talked about the stress that it would cause on the Westchester School District, but you forgot to mention the emergency services, that we currently share emergency services with three townships. And if a development goes in, it's going to stretch it even more and taxes are still going to be higher.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm not good at reading from notes, and so I always forget something. But part of what went into the, certainly the cost of community services are the, not only infrastructure maintenance and upkeep, but also increased emergency services and all of those things. So yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Lisi, I just want to clarify one thing. The funding contingency under the agreement of sale, which is to receive 75% from the various funding sources, is to be satisfied by March 31st, 2023. So now that can be extended, in closing, can be extended out to, I think it's September of 2023.
Good evening. Joe Kellner, 1002 Martin Road in West Chester. I would like the representative from Natural Lands to respond to Mr. Walsh's figures, that you showed as basically being overly conservative and that what we can expect to see in the form of taxes will be significantly greater than what he represented.
Well, I mean, I wish I could, I hadn't seen Mr. Walsh's figures, and so I don't know them, so I can't really respond to them. What I can tell you is the study that we worked on with Brandywine did use West Town Township numbers. It was not, they were not pulled out of the air. They were actual numbers used from not only West Town Township, but also specifically looking at the development scenario under Toll Brothers scenario. And so we used as realistic of numbers as we had available to us.
So were there any specific numbers that Mr. Walsh presented tonight that you object to outright?
I mean, to be honest, some of the numbers, I didn't even understand where they were coming from. So I, without seeing, without reading and seeing the data, I don't know. So. But I would hope that there's folks who work for the township that have more knowledge on that than I do.
Yeah, so just some background on how those tax rates are generating. You know, there was that the analysis that was done, I believe in partnership with, was used...
you guys, one of your partner organizations from three or four years ago, we dusted that off for more recent numbers. And you know, we also had a long conversation with our financial advisors. So we use, it used to be called, well, it's now called STIFLE, it used to be called Ben and Scattered, but they're our financial advisors. And anytime we do a bond sale or get our ducks in a row for a bond sale, we make sure that they're on the same page as our numbers. And so they went through and checked our numbers and everything complied. They have very advanced models, they can account things like upcoming Federal Reserve interest rate hikes, and pretty much we nailed it at the staff level according to STIFLE, they were satisfied. If anything, they said we were slightly, we were even more conservative, if you will, than they're now. So everybody was satisfied with the results of our analysis.
Thank you.
John, was the bond just-
John, the bonds that were just refinanced, what rate did you refinance at?
I'm no longer a finance director, so like the TIC, which stands for true interest cost, basically yield on bonds, I mean, those are numbers I used to sort of have in the top man. When we went out to the bond market in 2021 to refinance, that was before, you know, it was before the real increase in the Federal Reserve overnight lending rate, it was probably in the high twos, I guess. The 3.5 was in the high threes, I want to say. So this is lower, you know, so when you issue, and I just want us to make this clear, I don't want it to turn into a public finance seminar, but municipal debt has a much lower rate than you would pay on a mortgage. There's a couple of reasons for it. The first one is that municipalities have taxing authority and therefore it could sort of be the most credit worthy types of organizations out there. The next reason is because the debt holder doesn't pay taxes on any capital gains. And so therefore, they're willing to, investors are willing to accept a lower interest rate in return for a lower tax level. So we're always going to have, if you think about like a 30, the interest rate on a 30-year mortgage, the rate that municipalities borrow at is always going to be 1.5, 2% lower than that, just as I know.
The one number I will respond to, because I do have knowledge, is, I believe Mr. Walsh talked about maintenance of the property going forward and costing $150,000 a year. By comparison, and because we do this a lot, we own and manage, you know, roughly 10,000 acres in Chester County. We have a 200-acre preserve not too far from here, Green Hills, that has a parking lot and essentially very similar trails. It was actually the model we used to kind of show the concept of what a 200-acre nature preserve might look like. And our annual operating budget on that is 40, 40 to 50, with staff spending time there. So just to give you an idea. No, that's on a 200-acre preserve, similar to what we're talking about.
Okay. So the number that we used was the cost of the bond, if they just got a bond now for just under 4%, high three, just under four. By next year, this bond comes into play, given the fact that the interest rates are going, and absolutely municipal bonds are cheaper than corporate bonds for the reasons that John stated, that you don't pay tax on them. I own many of them just for that reason. We used a 5% tax rate, and that's where the numbers came from. So that's 1% higher than we're getting now, and we'd be talking about doing this sometime next year. So I think that's a relatively prudent rate. So that's where the numbers derive from. They weren't made up, they're not 78, 9%. And the cost of maintenance is always a crapshoot because one of the things on their plan, which not really a plan, it's kind of preliminary, is to put 100 in, I forget how many now, 1,500 trees or something in there where they lose, when you lose a farm, you're going to have to plant something. You could do grasses, you could do this. They need to like parry and buffer along the streams. So when they first go in, those trees are going to require 10 to 12 gallons of water a week. That's why you see developments where they put the rubber boot around the base of the tree. Somebody has to fill them. They don't fill themselves. As you know, this summer, we can't count on that. So there aren't costs involved in this. The costs are going to vary year to year depending upon what they actually do. If they keep all the property mode the way it looks today, which I doubt we'll be able to afford to do because the money's not here, and the money's not in the general budget for that, it's anybody's guess where it'll go. Five years from now, two years from now, Crayville could look, despite their best efforts, could look more like a wooded area rather than what it is now. Could look just like it is now if it's properly maintained, but we won't know that until after the fact. But my numbers were based upon the township, that all the costs that have been stated for all of these developments.
Good evening. My name is Eva Foster. I've been a resident of West Town Township since 1975. And I want to clarify a few things these gentlemen have said. First of all, I have tried to keep pre-billy open and in farming. It was outburdening the residents, but I was unsuccessful. Any better? Okay, thank you. Try again. I have tried to keep pre-billy open and in farming without burdening the residents of West Town, but was unsuccessful. Without the knowledge or consent of the township, I went to the Birmingham Township Supervisors. Since Birmingham abuts pre-billy and so many Birmingham residents are interested in its preservation, I hoped they would be interested in its preservation. I asked the Birmingham Supervisors if they would be interested in buying the property, all, apart, or just a Brandywine swap. They politely listened and said, "Thank you," and nothing after that. After all, why should they pay a dime when the spendthrifts in West Town want to pay for the whole thing themselves? Birmingham will be able to use and enjoy it, and the cost will be on our backs. At least, I tried. Next, I wrote to the governor, the head of the Department of Agriculture-
Do you have a question?
Yeah, question.
Question.
I'm sorry, who, don't interrupt. Let's not interrupt.
You're supposed to be asking a question.
Yeah, I hear you.
I've got a question for them, and it's coming. Next, I wrote to the governor, the head of the Department of Agriculture, and the DCNR, which is this letter, asking for an exception to the no agricultural rule. I received this letter from Cindy Adams Dunn, the head of-